Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Mercedes.
Present.
Riza.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro. Schmidt.
Present.
I don't believe we have any remote electronic attendance, so we'll move to public comment. Chief, is there a public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. You have three minutes.
Hi, dear. Thank you for listening to me. I've lived on Fifth Avenue since 1997, and I've had four automobiles demolished, three on Fifth Avenue and one on Third Street. Just lately, about three weeks ago, the last one was hit, and I'm buying automobiles because nobody seems to have insurance to take care of me. And so, and I know I've got to go to traffic, so, but I would like to see a stop sign with the blinking put on Fifth Avenue, right there, Second and Third Street, because they think it's the Speedway, the raceway. They'll go 60 mile an hour, and they're going around an S curve down there. And the last one that hit me could have, if children would have been there, what if they'd went into that and ran through that fence and ran into a child, you know? And that's what I'm seeing, is if the police officer could stay down there, like, not when it's traffic, but I'm saying when it's later on in the evening, I mean, because they think it's the Speedway. And I would like to see a bump-up put out for me, and I've got to have that also, because I'm disabled and I have a handicap to walk up to my house, and I have a handicap sticker and stuff, and I can't afford to keep buying these automobiles, you know? I mean, it's just killing me. I mean, I'm a single person, trying to take care of myself. I still work, and I'm 75 years old, and I can't walk up on the hill, halfway up the hill. In the winter, I work for the Robert Young Center, and I would like to, you know, be able to have a bump out, something that they have down on First Street for somebody else. I would like to see that done for me, and I just would appreciate you guys' help. I would love to show you all the videos of the two crashes I have on my camera, but the police, I sent it to the police, and they took care of it, you know what I'm saying? But nobody has insurance to take care of me. I mean, my insurance, sooner or later, they're going to say, hey, you're done. You know, we're going to say, we're not paying for you no more, you know? And I mean, and it's not even my fault, you know? So that's where I'm at. I'm hoping that, to tell me what to do, to follow through, you know, because I think a stop sign right there at Second and Third Street is going to help immensely, because, like I said, 60, 70 mile an hour, and you stay there at 7:00, 8:00 o'clock, and I'm in the express, but on the weekends. I mean, one was at 1:03, and the one was 12 something, and I mean, one demolished three automobiles, she did. Didn't get a ticket other than too fast for conditions, you know? She wasn't paying attention. She could have went over and hit that fence, you know, instead of demolishing three automobiles. Same way with the one that, you know, wrap it up. The third, the one that just hit me, somebody hit him coming across, uh, Third, Second and Third, right there, going across Fifth Avenue, hit him first, and then he'd come over and back, and then hit me, demolished, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
And I'm just hoping something can be done about it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment, Chief? Thank you. We move to our oath of office for appointment of Laura Williamson to the position of Director of Utilities effective July 7, 2025. Vitas?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mayor, members of council. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Laura Williamson as the new Director of Utilities for the city of Moline. Laura has a long history in local government, as well as in the public sector, having even worked for engineering companies in the past. Most recently, she was the Director of Public Works in Murphy, Texas, and was looking for a way home. She's from Illinois, from, I believe, the Rockford area, if I'm not mistaken, where her elderly parents reside this time, and coming back to Illinois to finish out her career here in the city of Moline. So with that, I'd like to have the mayor administer the oath of office and welcome Laura to the city of Moline.
This one is for you. You would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Laura Williamson, having been duly appointed to the position of Director of Utilities for the city of Moline, Illinois.
City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And the Moline co-ordinances.
And the Moline co-ordinances.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of Director of Utilities.
Of the position of Director of Utilities.
In the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the sake of the law.
According to the best of my [inaudible]. Okay, we have several appointments or reappointments to read through. Ms. Bennett is here. Thank you for coming so often. Mayor's appointment of Deb Bennett to the Citizens Advisory Council on Urban Policy for a three-year term to expire July 31, 2028. Mayor's reappointment of Jersey Rivers, Brandy Poston, and Josette McCoy to the Citizens Advisory Council on Urban Policy for three-year terms to expire July 31, 2028. Mayor's appointment of Nathan Tilburg to the Plan Commission, six-year term to expire June 30, 2031. And the mayor's reappointment of Brett Carter to the Plan Commission for a six-year term to expire June 30, 2031. Some questions? Here we go. We move to our presentations. 7.1 ISA WWA Water Ambassador Program Award, Gold Level Designation. Mr. Brown.
Well, thank you. Every day, the workers of the Division of Water in Moline work very hard to make, I think, the best local quality of water there is. But like most things in life, what's the purpose of being great if you don't tell everybody about it? So what we have today is we have [inaudible] section of the American Water Association, and she is going to present an award to Melissa Coden and Liz Hanson, who are, run our community outreach to educate the public and are elected representatives for the quality and the benefit of water.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me. The Illinois Section American Water Works Association is dedicated to safe and sustainable water throughout Illinois. We are part of our Greater American Water Works Association, and here in the state, we have over 2,400 members, of which the city of Moline is one. We do a lot of education to ensure that our water and wastewater operators and engineers have the latest updates on the technology, current standards, all the great things that they need to do to ensure your water quality maintains where it's at. One of the other things that we do is, we really are trying to educate our public and our elected officials, not only about the infrastructure, right, that we can't see that's running from the river to here for your water, but also about the value of your water and how great that really is coming out of the tap. You use it every day, but do you really know where it came from? I hope you do. There's a beautiful river right here. But for a lot of people, they don't. They just assume they turn their tap on and it's there. And so, the Water Ambassador Program recognizes 27 communities this year across the state on the great work that they're doing to make sure that our community understands their water, can see that it's a great benefit to live in these cities with this water quality, and also to just help us understand a little bit better what a great resource we have. So I'm proud today to be here to share with you that you are a Gold Level, which is our highest level, of Water Ambassador Awardee. Again, you're one of 27 communities across the state, and really proud of the work that you're doing, and look forward to even more engagement from all of you, our citizens here, and your community, and how great your water is. So thank you for having me. And if you guys will join me, I hope we take a photo with everyone. So let's congratulate them on all of their hard work.
You guys can come up this way.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, 7.2, City of Moline, Moline High School Internship. Mr. Tidwell.
Good evening, Your Honor, and good evening, council members. I'm really excited to be here tonight and just take a couple minutes of your time to tell you about the amazing program that we are offering to MHS students. Our internship program is not new. It's about four years old at this point, and it was an initiative that started under Mayor Rayapati. And so, this year, going into our fourth year, we really decided to take a hard look at the program and determine what could be done better, what could we do differently that would have a larger impact on our students. And so, we really focused on learning outcomes. So not necessarily just tasks that we wanted students to do when they came to the city of Moline, but how are we better preparing them for careers, either going to college or careers that are going to put them directly into the workforce. And so, as we re, kind of evaluated our program, the slide that you have in front of you talks about the three areas of focus that we've now moved to. So the first area is career preparation. So in the past, what would happen is that when students came to us, if you were interested in the program, everyone was accepted. And although that was a blessing, and we gave a lot of opportunities to a lot of students, it was also a challenge for our staff, to be quite honest. And so, we wanted to make sure that this was a good experience for both staff and students. And so, we wanted to make sure we were preparing them for the real world. So for step one is career prep. If you were interested in the program, students had to put together a cover letter. They had to put together a resume. They had to apply for a job using an online electronic application process. A lot of them had not done that before. This is the first time they've gotten that experience in doing so. Then they actually went through an interview. So myself and my colleague, Juan Schultz, went to the high school, set up times where we interviewed students for the actual internship process at the high school, and then selected them based upon the materials they submitted and their interview skills as well. The next step in that process is they went through a formal orientation, just like any of our employees, going through training, safety regulations, and setting expectations about what we want them to be able to do and what we expect of all of our employees at the city of Moline. Again, preparing them for any job that they're going to get after graduation. The next step was really preparing them for a pathway for future employment to the city of Moline. Although this is a great benefit, we want this to be a resource and a future talent pool. So we're really trying to develop students to come back and be future employees. And the way that we've done that is we structured two different career paths, so students can express an interest in either working on the public works and utilities side of the house or on the administrative side of the house as more executive, finance, human resources. When they select that career path, in the past, they may be slotted to a particular department, and they would spend their entire four to six weeks in that entire department. Well, as all you all know, you don't know what you don't know, right? And when someone asks you what kind of job you want to be in, you probably don't know when you're in high school. And so, this year, we changed that. And so, basically, all students now are going through a rotation through multiple departments. So if you're on the public works and utilities side of the house, you're going to spend time in wastewater. You're going to spend time in drinking water. You're going to spend time in public works and grounds. If you're on the admin side of the house, you're going to spend time in finance, in HR, in an executive, in legal. Again, exposing students to opportunities that they didn't know were actual job or career paths before. And then, the other part of this, lastly, is experiential learning. So not only are we wanting to make sure that we're getting them into the actual fields, we want to make sure what they're doing is actually putting them into the roles, having them make some of the choices and the decisions, instead of just being observers. And so, some things that are different this year is that all students are going through a pretty in-depth tour of Moline City properties. So they spend entire four hours traveling around with our risk management, a net roby, who's here, one-on-one, going through the fire department, the water department, the waste treatment plant, which everyone is amazed by, because people don't realize what goes into that. But then also, we've incorporated a strategic planning session. So just like the strategic planning session that all of you went through, they did their own. And if you haven't seen those goals, you will, and some of them are very similar, but I think they have some good suggestions as well, too. So I'm excited for you to take a look at those. We also did a muffins with the mayor, which was a morning to spend one-on-one time with Mayor Rayapati, to just be able to ask some questions, find out a little bit more about what it means to work in municipal government. And then, obviously, some of them are joining us here tonight, and I'll introduce them here as well, to just see how city council meetings work. And then, they're actually evaluating us. So one thing that's different is that they've each been given a QR code, and the expectation has been set that on the Friday of each week at the end of their rotation, they're filling out a survey on that department, on how things went that week. What did they like? What did they learn? What surprised them? How was their supervisor? And we've utilized that to make real in-time adjustments to maybe things that maybe a student wasn't right, in the right career path, and maybe they need to be looking at something else based upon what their interests are. Or maybe they want more time in another department. So we're utilizing that to make real-time adjustments. And then, we've actually incorporated a scavenger hunt to ensure that they're touching bases on all parts of the municipal government. And then, lastly, the expectation is they'll put together a final project, which they'll present to their peers and some of our department directors as well, too. So I think, just lastly, in wrapping up, you know, we were hopeful that this would have a really positive impact. I'm happy to share today that we had a very positive meeting with the Ask Me New Executive Board, and one of the things they brought up was the caliber of students that they have received this year has been amazing, and they have been really pleased with the new program and how it's going. So I'm glad to be here tonight to share that success with you. We have nine interns joining us specifically from Moline High School, but then we also have our Bob Turner intern, who is actually joining us this evening as well, too. So why call your name if you just want to raise your hand? So we have Chelsea, Emmy, Grant, Maria, and Kristen. So again, thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We do appreciate students taking a chance on us as well, so we'll hopefully keep spreading the word. 7.3, Payments to Agencies. Mr. Vitas.
Thank you, Brendan. That was a great presentation. It's a great program, and yes, we will share the results of the strategic planning session that the students did with full council. And you will find a lot of similarities, as he pointed out, in terms of, you know, what their thought process was, in terms of the goals for the city, based on the pillars and our mission and our vision. And they put together really quite a great plan, you know, a youth plan for the future of the city. So yeah, we'll be sharing that shortly. Okay, with that, speaking of youth, we move on to our payments to agencies. So our Moline Youth Commission is slated for an ongoing contribution of $10,000 into the next several fiscal years. I'm sure you can see that. Now, that number hasn't gone up. It hasn't gone down. It has remained consistently the same over the last several years. So that stays where that is at, or at least that's the recommendation from the administration. Moving on to our Historic Preservation Commission, again, $15,000 going forward for, I believe it's 2026, and then each, each year thereafter, kind of creating a level funding base for them, so that as there are projects that they want to work on, they don't have to wonder where their funding sources are. Up until this time, a lot of the funding has come out of the contingency funds for administration that has helped them to, you know, purchase plaques, so that they can plaque historic buildings or develop the signage that they would like to place, for example, on the riverfront, recognizing the development of the city and David B. Sears. So to give you an idea, that's what that money would be used for going forward with the Historic Commission. Moving on, of course, we have the Rock Island Arsenal Defense Alliance, a critical, critical organization here that basically works not only with Moline, but all of the other major cities here and the counties to maintain and promote and bring business to the Rock Island Arsenal Island. And you can see that amount is a level spending level of $26,100 over the next several fiscal years. And then, lastly, we have the
Skip to River Action.
Skip to River, where is River Action?
Did I?
Oh, sorry. There you go. Probably should get new glasses at this, but I see it now. So River Action, of course, we've been a longtime funder of River Action, and again, a flat $8,000 is being recommended for the next several fiscal years, which brings us then to this evening, the last one, which is the Public Art Commission, and Public Art, who is in the process of seeking state grants in addition to funding from the city. There is a level $75,000 funding recommended going forward. There are, of course, as you know, the way the ordinance is structured, there's a percentage that they are supposed to reclaim, not only from city improvements on the, our public arts corridors into downtown, but also private sector development that occurs actually on those corridors. Up until now, that hasn't really been happening, but going forward, we expect we will start to see that with some of the projects, including the one this evening for the Modern, too. So those are our recommendations and administration going forward for our, at least those agencies, coupled with the ones that are on this page as well. And as you can see, the total Moline contributions, all funds included, it ranges, but right now for 2026, the recommendation is $1,180,972 in total. And then, the subsequent years, it goes up to $1,247, and then $1,186, it drops back down. So in the outlying years, I see the number going down, at least for the moment. No crystal ball for four years from now.
Questions from the council, comments? Mr. Schmidt?
Have we yet received from the Youth Commission any sort of rubric they're using to assess where their money is going?
I have not.
No?
No.
They have given us a report, and they continue to talk about all of the school-related things, if that's what you're getting at. You know, that was our question last year.
Yeah.
The report I got was about wanting to focus on mental health, youth mental health. That was about it. I can certainly go back to them and ask for more.
I guess, I, we had set that expectation that after asking several times for it, that we were not going to head into 2025, and it is planning cycle, without some sort of understanding of how they're making those decisions. It does sound like they've moved in that direction. I mean, deciding that they want to be addressing mental health is, I think, a, an excellent way to focus that money and place to go, but
Okay.
I'm not sure the list I'm seeing here is representative of that objective.
I'm just pulling it up.
And, and I just, I think that my concern is that, that I understand all these organizations are here and asking for money, and there is a larger need, and that certainly is true. But my biggest concern is, I think I'd like to see the Youth Commission identifying what I think is the most serious problem and putting all of our money toward that problem, which may require seeking out where that goes, because some of these organizations are organizations who know how to ask for money, including knowing how to ask it from other places. And I think if they've been longtime funded, that we don't need to keep pouring money in those same spots, especially if we're identifying mental health as that objective, which I think is probably a good one. So I'm, I'm just concerned that there's a better way to do it, and that we've been asking them for now two years to give us that. And I would intend to vote them with a zero allocation if we don't have that by budget time.
Okay.
And I will make that.
I will work with our clerk that helps me with the commissions to either be at one to explain this or communicate what, I will try to go back and have our clerk remind us some of our conversation from last year's budget talk, so I'm not just functioning on memory, and ask for more detail, if that's the will of the council. I think it's also upon Mr. Vitas and myself, when we have quarterly or so meetings with the school district superintendent, we need to seriously ask why they're not funding web leaders and other things that, I mean, there's, we need to, there's a significant percentage of school district-related things that are being funded by the Youth Commission budget. Okay. Other thoughts from the council on this week's presentation for payments to agencies? Just as a reminder, this is just a preliminary presentation
Correct.
For what we go through in the fall, in the budget session. I, I thought I would be able to have a graphic for y'all, but I don't, I don't know if you're like me, where you need a visual to pull all this information together. And after going to the presentation with the association, her funding professionals and Watson and Associates, last week, that featured Project Now, Riverbend Food Bank, Humility Homes, and Community Healthcare, I, I thought I would just share the visual that came to my mind, as we know we're walking through these monthly or almost weekly presentations to payments to agencies and all of our goals. In my head, it's the needs separated into two major buckets, right? Poverty reduction, which we're pretty committed to with the Level Up Program, and other, other things through CDBG and community development, and housing. Those are like the two big buckets I feel like we've had emerge from our strategic planning for the last year or so and can continue. And then, there were smaller buckets underneath that I'm not sure if we will have the resources to get to, but that issue of healthcare and food access and stability, and all of those things that sometimes CDBG has filled in the gap for, right, with the food vouchers and all of those kinds of things, federal dollars. I, if, I don't know if that helps you to think on two levels of like the primary buckets that we've been talking about, and then sort of the secondary buckets, but as we continue to get more updates and talk about it in our work sessions on the budget, I just thought I'd offer that as a visual for how, and an explanation for how I'm making sense of the need and where we might go. There was one other thing related to these, but we'll move on, unless there's anything further from this. Okay, thank you. We have a proclamation tonight for Mr. Griffith, Director of Parks and Recreation, to declare the month of July 2025 as Park and Recreation Month. Want to say anything?
Real quick, this is the 40th year that the United States recognizes Parks and Recreation Month for July, and this year's theme is Build Together, Play Together. It's not just celebrating what we currently have in Moline, but it's also celebrating the, the hard-working employees that are behind that. This career path is not for everyone. There's over 160,000 employees across the United States employed full-time, with 23 of them being in Moline, and then the hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal staff, which we have over 150 of them between Green Valley and Park Maintenance and our summer camp and all that kind of, all those different locations. So just thank you for the support from the city council and, and city staff, and, you know, we, we work every day. More behind the scenes, most of our employees are behind the scenes to make sure our tournaments run well, and Riverside, Riverside is going well, so I appreciate the support.
I just got a text today saying that the Butterworth Parkway Playground looked really great.
Perfect.
So there you have it. So here's a proclamation that says, "Whereas parks and recreation facilities and programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Moline, and whereas parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Moline recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore, I, Sangethe Rayapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim July 25, 2025, as Park and Recreation Month." Thank you so much, Mr. Griffith. Okay, we move on. Don't believe there are any questions on the agenda. So we move to our committee of the whole agenda items. 10.1, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute and Attest to a License and Concession Agreement Between the City of Moline, By &amp; Through Its Park and Recreation Board, and Little Seaby's Taste of Something LLC for the Purpose of Selling Food and Beverages to the Public from a Mobile Food Unit or Pushcart at the Northeast from a mobile food unit or push cart at the northeast parking lot of Stevens Park from July seventeen, 2025 through July sixteen, 2027, as weather permits at the city's sole discretion for a license fee of seven hundred dollars per annum, and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to fulfill the terms of the license and concession agreement. Mr. Griffith or Mr. Vitas?
I'm, I'm happy to take this one. If you've had the reps, I recommend approval. Really, he's got a great little business over there, kind of like tucked away in the middle of nowhere, Moline, and we're recommending approval based on the park board's recommendation as well.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Ten point two, a resolution authorizing participation in the State of Illinois Federal Surplus Property Program and authorizing the Assistant Director of Public Works to submit the Federal Surplus Property Program eligibility application and do all things necessary to implement said program.
Good evening. Good evening. We are looking to enter into the Federal Surplus Property Program. This is administered through the State of Illinois. This basically is for local governments, other not-for-profits to take advantage of equipment and vehicles no longer needed by the federal government. This is a resource, we look at as another resource to acquire property. We have no obligation to actually make any purchases, but since this is a new, kind of a unique program, I will report out any purchases made through the, the program as well.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Oops, sorry, any opposed? That motion passes. Ten point three, a resolution approving the installation of a single stop sign at the northeast corner of the intersection of Twenty-seventh Avenue and Thirty-first Street for westbound traffic. And directing city staff to install a single stop sign at the northeast corner of the intersection of Twenty-seventh Avenue and Thirty-first Street for westbound traffic. Mr. Dryer, are you online?
I'm, I'm here. This was an item that came to us through the district alder. Concerned about the intersection Twenty-seventh and Thirty-first amongst other things. Traffic Engineering Committee reviewed it, and they recommended for consistency's sake with several of the other intersections in the neighborhood that this stop sign be installed. It's, uh, these streets are atypical in that the traffic kind of winds its way through the neighborhood and Thirty-first with the left of Twenty-seventh is, is the higher movement and conversely, the other direction as well. So that's what the Traffic Engineering Committee recommended.
Thank you. Thank you to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Whose board was this? He mentioned the alder.
Alder, it was Finch.
Thank you so much.
I was drawing a blank.
No problem. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Ten point four, ordinance amending Chapter thirty-five zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting an amendment to the Zoning Map Incorporated therein as Section thirty-five dash thirty-one oh three, twelve, twelve, Sixth Avenue and twelve, thirty, Sixth Avenue.
Thank you, Your Honor. So as you mentioned, this is an application from Illinois Domus Two LLC, that's Jim Thompson. We're very excited about the project that's happening on these two lots, which you'll be seeing some items, one coming forward tonight and coming forward in the next, in the next meetings. But we're really excited for the project that Jim has proposed there. Sixty-nine new market rate apartments, a commercial storefront. So obviously, a very, very cool project. We are talking about rezoning tonight, so I, I do need to remind you that the rezoning, we want to evaluate that on the merits and what's in our code. The staff report that's attached here, you can see that we go through all the criteria in our zoning code to evaluate that. We recommended approval to the Plan Commission, and they agreed six oh. And you can also see that we do find it in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So we're recommending approval, and like I said, Jim Thompson is here if you have any questions from the application, applicant side.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Discussion? Think nothing on the merits other than thank you for bringing this project forward, Mr. Thompson, we're excited.
Yeah, we're. And it meets the form of his code, it's gonna be really cool when you haven't, if you haven't seen it yet.
Okay. So there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Ten point five, a resolution authorizing the Moline Public Art Commission to apply to the Illinois Arts Council for the creative project grant for up to twelve thousand dollars, and a grant from the Quad City Community Foundation for up to fifty thousand dollars for projects outlined in the Public Art Placemaking Plan, and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to apply to the Illinois Arts Council for the creative project grant for up to twelve thousand dollars, and a grant from the Quad City Community Foundation for up to fifty thousand dollars for projects outlined in the Public Art Placemaking Plan.
Thank you. We know we got a direction from the council that you'd like the PAC to be pursuing grants. We just want to make sure we do this formally and get authorization from you to do so. We'll be working with Quad City Arts to help us apply for these as well.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Messias. Mr. Schmidt?
I just want to express appreciation at making the motion and the Public Arts Commission kind of taking that to heart, knowing, you know, when, when we look at the big funding opportunities and what we can bring to the table, it, it can often be hard for us to find a lot of money at once and to keep those pieces. So I know we've been funding slowly over time, and I, I'm really happy to see, I feel like the commission is gaining their traction with, you know, they save, they build stuff, they found those lower cost opportunities, now the grants, I just, I'm really happy to see this. Really appreciate the work of you and commission, thank you.
Thanks, I'll share that.
Mr. McNeil?
Chris, for the River Connections Grant, I know they've funded in the past, and I'm just looking at language here. Equitable community engagement practices guided by communities of color or others disproportionately impacted by environmental issues. And like, do we have like a work in mind that fits that? Or are we looking to apply for the grant and then consider?
Well, well, we will have a project in mind for it, for sure. I know Alex already, and the commission talking back and forth, has projects in mind for both of these. I know one of them is the, is gonna be a project down by the Ferry Connection near the arena. That's one they have in mind. I can't remember which grant it was, the River Connections, I'm assuming, obviously, right? But, but yes, they have projects in mind.
Okay.
Anything for else? I, I guess this is appropriate for, now I remember what I was gonna say about Public Art Commission funding, and it's not direct, you can stop me if it's not appropriate. But clearly, they listened to us last year, you know, as you were saying, Mr. Schmidt, to find grant money. I also just think the council will need to consider, as they consider the, the payments to agencies for next year, right? It's gonna be easy to think we should cut funding if we're in a real pinch, given the balance we're gonna have to find between our needs and wants and federal dollars missing or, or there, et cetera. But as we're also about to embark in the River Front and Center Plan, it would, in my mind, be a shame to not kind of lean into the public art and have it all in place so that when everything happens at the River Front and Center Plan, that's not this one, like, cool thing in one spot, and then the rest of the town is not enlivened and awakened and activated by public art. Does that make, you understand what I'm saying? It just struck me as we were preparing for the meeting today that these items are interrelated. So that's why I wanted to remember to say. Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Ten point six, a resolution approving Path Forward Program, authorizing the use of opioid settlement funds in the amount of eighty thousand dollars should provide up to five thousand in one-time financial assistance to eligible Moline residents actively engaged in substance use recovery programs, and authorizing the Community and Economic Development Department staff to do any and all things necessary to implement said program. You or Chief?
Well, we had the explanation, Madam Mayor and council members at the last meeting, so we're looking, recommending approval by council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion? Were you about to say something or were you just motioning? You were about to motion. You okay?
I'm fine.
Anything from the council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Ten point seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a licensing agreement with J.D. Management LLC to install, use, and maintain pan faces and existing wall sign for advertising slash identification purposes only above the entrance of eighteen, twenty-five, Seventh Street.
So you'll, you'll see a lot of these periodically. If we get a sign permitted, we're gonna check to see if we have a license agreement. If we don't, we're gonna get one in place. So Irene's checking those constantly. We discovered another one today that'll be coming. So these are, these are fairly routine, but we do, we do allow signs over the sidewalk, over the right of way, as long as we can get these agreements in place.
Motion to approve? Second. Did you finish your sentence?
Motion to approve?
Second. Instead, it was motion by Schmidt, seconded by Finch. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Ten point eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a licensing agreement with Bent River Brewing Company for use of parking lot W to sell alcoholic liquor in conjunction with the Rouse Consulting Group thirtieth anniversary block party on September twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Your Honor, I beg your pardon. I need to recuse myself on this item as Rouse Consulting Group is a client.
Thank you.
Staff directing approval.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Ten point nine, a resolution approving purchase of one parcel of excess I-74 bridge property from the Illinois Department of Transportation for the total fair market value of seventy-one thousand and directing city administration and the city attorney to pursue the purchase of said parcel with IDOT through its completion, and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, city attorney, and city staff to do all things necessary to acquire said real property. Mr. Vitas?
At long last, this is the final remnant parcel following the completion of the I-74 bridge project and relocation in downtown Moline. This is the, the final remnant that originally the, the city was not interested in purchasing because of its intended use or lack of ability to use the property. In discussions with IDOT, as we walked our way through the MKSK planning process and through the realignment of all of the access on River Drive, and in further discussions with IDOT, learned that they were, they are unable to record the easements of all of the city's public utilities that blanket this property, rendering it pretty much basically undevelopable. That said, they requested that, in order for us to proceed, that there would be a resolution by council as normal, authorizing the purchase of the property. We in turn then would notify them of that. They will, on, based on receipt of this resolution and a letter to purchase from the city, they will in turn then process the deed in Springfield, that DOT headquarters. That deed will come back to the city, that deed will then result in the, the sale of the property between IDOT and, and the City of Moline. Then in turn, the city will then work with the engineering department, and we're already doing this, or long been doing it, is to establish the permanent easements for all of the underground utilities that exist on the north side of River Drive between the I-74 on-ramp to Iowa and, and Twenty-third Street at the intersection. So we're recommending approval at this point, and that the property then in turn would be sold to the Riverstone Group, who is the intended recipient and has expressed an interest in purchasing the property.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Ten point ten, a resolution approving the inducement of a redevelopment of certain property within the Moline Center TIF thirteen redevelopment project area. Mr. Park?
Thank you. As mentioned with the property at twelve, thirty-sixth Avenue, the Modern Two Development in TIF thirteen, there is a Illinois Domus Two, is the landowner and developer. The primary parcel has another parcel just to the east of it, twelve, twelve, Sixth Avenue. And we'd like to amend the TIF boundary to include, include that parcel as well as another thousand square feet added to, added to the overall property. That is already in the development consideration and maximize the development area. So it'd be an addition of that to the TIF boundary, so that will take time to do that. So we want to pass this resolution to induce the developer to incur those costs to continue to advance the development in advance of the TIF boundary being amended and also in advance of the development agreement being executed between the parties.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ten point eleven, a resolution approving the designation of a developer and the inducement of the redevelopment of certain property within the Fifth Avenue TIF fifteen redevelopment project area. Mr. Park?
So, TIF fifteen, so one of our newer TIFs. L.A. Knights LLC is a property owner of the property located at seventeen, twenty-fifth Avenue. Moline Dispatch Apartments LLC is going to be the development entity for, for the Dispatch Apartments. So a forty-unit rehabilitation project, so do, so looks great. We've gone through the process of review of that, and we're still, still in the process of that. Having finalized the development, development agreement to date, so like to pass this resolution at this time to memorialize the fact that the project has made great progress. As jumping the hurdles, we're pleased with the project thus far. Having determined the final negotiation of the development agreement and the TIF participation, so we'd like to induce a developer to, to start, so the, continue with the project so that we're capturing those costs prior to development agreement and subject to development agreement being approved.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Timmy. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Eleven point one, July twenty twenty-five Status and Information Report. Mr. Vitas?
That's hard to follow. Hundred and nine units going in in one commercial storefront. That wasn't, that wasn't the case four years ago. So kudos to this council for its leadership and guidance and focus on, on housing as an important need in downtown Moline. That is part of a future status and information report. This month's highlights are kind of interesting. Eleven new mobile food unit licenses, eleven new. So the marketplace is moving. People have confidence, people are investing in their own businesses. So that's a real plus to see that kind of growth in that emerging market. I call that the emerging market, because one day, some of those become permanent storefronts. Some of them always remain a food, food vendor, they prefer it. But the reality is, is that we are seeing some great movement, as you know, economically here in Moline. Great news, the Riverfront Master Plan, the base document with MKSK is basically closed out now. We are moving forward to conclusion of that project, or at least this phase of that project. Coming forward, we expect that we will see a, a marketing plan, which is important. So the marketing element of what has been designed for the Riverfront and, and the downtown, we'll be doing that. And then moving forward with, of course, the grants to try and support this as well, as grant funding is great. The Build Grant, I know it's not listed here, but the Build Grant was delayed in terms of the announcement. It should have been by June thirtieth. Looking back at the past, you know, they've typically run into July, so we are monitoring closely. In fact, we've even reached out to the people at USDOT that we met with when the mayor and I and Dawn Temple were there, along with our lobbyists in DC. The half a million dollars, again, IDOT Home Repair and Accessibility Program through the CED Department, through Community Development. Major win all the time. It's what, it's what really helps, helps to fund repairs to those, those homes in this community that otherwise would go unrepaired, frankly. And KJ's team been working on this for how many years, KJ?
With IDOT, about twenty.
About twenty, so about less than half of the time you've been here, really. Yeah. So anyway, I'll keep up the great work, KJ. New Electronic Performance Management System. This is something that we started talking about years ago. And thanks to the growth of the HR department, the addition of Brandon Tidwell and the leadership through, through Lee up, we've been able to implement this program. No simple lift, no simple task. I'm still trying to figure out how to use it, I'm gonna be honest, and I'm sure everybody else is. But it is taking and moving the entire system to an online platform so that that way, you know, you get constant reminders that, you know, that these reviews are coming up, these reviews need to be done, these reviews are due today, these reviews are past due. And we're all guilty of that, believe me, self-included. And we're all guilty of that, believe me, self included. We get busy, but it's a great reminder system, and it's a way to make sure that employee's performance is reported on, that employee's performance is being monitored, you know, and at least they have an idea of how well they're doing, right? So there's some good information going back and forth. So really, a great system, streamlining what we were doing, which was an old paper system, which wasn't the best. And then lastly, I'm just gonna mention the Marquis Harbor Drudging Project that Eric spearheaded with the US Army Corps. That project is done. All of the material is gonna be out there for up to ninety days total from the date of completion of closing it all off. And if you've been out there, you can see it's a tremendous amount of fill material, some of which we will evaluate and assess using our engineers through MKSK. And what we need, we will keep on site, and what we don't need, then we have those who are interested in it, and we will dispose of it. So just sharing that with you, and if there's any questions, I'm always happy to answer those here or anytime.
Yes, Mr. Timmy?
With the transformer replacement, are we officially on both grids again now as a result?
We should be.
All right, great.
Should be.
It's a longtime overdue.
Yep, yeah.
Anything further from the council?
Okay, if not, we will move to call our regular council meeting to order. Fledges of allegiance, please.
Fledges of allegiance to the United States of America. United Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation, Alderperson Schmidt?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
McNeil?
Present.
Castro? Schmidt?
Present.
All right, we don't have any remote electronic attendance. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda.
Your Honor, I request the approval of executive session meeting minutes of June three, 2025, council meeting minutes of June ten, 2025, committee of the whole, council, and executive session meeting minutes of June seventeen, 2025, appointments made at committee of the whole on July eight, 2025, and consent agenda items nineteen point one through twenty point seven inclusively.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number twenty-two point one. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a license and concession agreement between the city of Moline by and through its Park and Recreation Board and L.L. Stevie's Taste of Something LLC for the purpose of selling food and beverages to the public from a mobile food unit or push cart at the northeast parking lot of Stevens Park from July seventeen, 2025 through July sixteen, 2027, as weather permits, at the city's sole discretion for a license fee of $700 per annum, and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to fulfill the terms of the license and concession agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number twenty-two point two. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an employment agreement of city administrator between the city of Moline and Bogdan Vitas Jr.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Timian. Discussion?
Thanks for sticking on.
Well, can I say something?
Yes.
I need to say something. I'm not known to man a few words, so.
Lord love us.
I'm watching the clock.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I just want to, first of all, express my gratitude to the mayor and to this council, you know, for its leadership, for its collaboration, cooperation, everything that we've done together the last four years, leading the city to where it is today. Can't be done by one person. It's a team. You know, I knew that when I met everybody back in the summer of, you know, summer of 2021. It was June fourteenth, the day that I started here with the city of Moline. Those were different times, as I look around the organization today, and I see where we're at. We've got great people and great places of leadership. Even tonight, we filled another one of those voids with Laura Williamson, which was a great addition to the city. She will bring great things here, based on her experience. But we've got a great team of dedicated professionals. And that's what makes my job even easier. You know, you can't do this on your own. It really, you know, I have an aura like everybody else in the water, right? When I say words up, everyone's words go up. When I say words down, everyone's words go down. You know, it's that kind of a relationship. It's an open relationship with council. It's an open relationship with the community. The door's always been open, and the community's been supportive, our business community and the residents as well. So I want to thank you. I'm looking forward to the next four years, which will be the last four. I'll announce that right now. It will be the last four. And so we'll end a long career, starting back in 1980. So it's been a long road, and I'm excited about where we got to. And I'm even more excited about what the next four years is gonna produce and watching the cranes go up and watching the earth-moving equipment. And that's what this is all about, is making sure that whatever we do is we're improving the quality of life for the people in this community and for our businesses. So, thank you.
If there's nothing further, roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda first reading ordinances. Item number twenty-three point one. An ordinance amending Chapter twenty-three Parks and Recreation of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article two, operation of park and recreational facilities, Section twenty-three dash two-one-zero-three, Trails, Rules of Conduct Applicable to Trails to Allow Non-Gas Powered slash Human Powered Activities on City Trails.
Motion to advance the second reading?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak? No, he was about the same time going this way. Seconded by Razak, please. Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-three point two. An ordinance amending Chapter eight Buildings and Other Construction and Building Services of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article eight, miscellaneous, Division four, Prime Free Residential Rental Program by repealing said Division four in its entirety.
Motion to advance to second reading?
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Finch. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-three point three. An ordinance amending Chapter twenty-seven Purchasing of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix One, City of Moline Purchasing Policy and Procedure by repealing said Appendix One in its entirety.
Motion to advance the second reading?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-three point four. An ordinance amending Chapter three Advertising and Signs of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article two, Signs, Section three dash two-one-one-zero, Sign Permits pertaining to the notice requirements for the expired signed permits.
Motion to advance the second reading?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy? Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion to advance to second reading carries, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Miscellaneous business. I don't have anything in particular other than with our extra time tonight, I'm gonna finally read your strategic planning in the other room. Ms. Murphy?
I want to thank everyone who attended the ward meeting. I think it was a great discussion, and I think it's starting for.
Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor. No, nothing. Thank you.
I would like to tell the council I was appointed to the Board of Humility Homes. So as we talk about that in the future, I might have to be, I might have to refuse, even though there's no financial interest. It's probably still better. But I'm happy to discuss that organization with you all individually as we see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing, Mr. Finch?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt?